Chris Shalishaw here, motion carried.
I'm getting your reading.
Okay. Uh, we have to do the pledge of allegiance, the flag is back there.
Yeah, it's all right, scouts are here tonight, so.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people of our country, stand one nation under God, in the name of the Lord. I would like to participate.
Angela, I'd like to point you to that door somewhere.
None.
It's all good.
Okay, um, so I'm gonna move on to administrative reports, Dr. Yu.
All right. So your building admin report is included in your bullet packet. We have a rep tonight from the building angels here, how's it going Angela?
Great, thanks.
Great, awesome. Uh, anything from the building report that you want to highlight?
We're just stellar, we're doing great.
Okay, we're gonna have cause I go with that, thanks.
I have a comment.
Please.
I just want to say that like, I'm so impressed with all the stuff we do for being small and being like, like, you know, I remember cheerleading was like five people before, like way back in the days. And now it's like more people, they're doing more, and they're accomplishing more. So I just, I look at all the pictures and it's like, wow. I hope like every child has an opportunity to participate in at least one activity, if not more, because that just engages them much. So, you know, I would, I know I, like, I got a pass through to that percentage of how many kids are, so.
Yeah, so every year, in this timeframe, we do the program evaluations. Uh, when we do extracurricular and co-curricular, you get those surveys. You get, uh, tell you how many students are in the junior high are involved. It's usually in the nineties plus that are involved in something. The goal is to get to a hundred percent. Nothing's ever a hundred percent, so.
There's such a variety.
Strong, there's a lot of variety.
You know, think about like baking clubs, three days a week, because so many kids wanted to do it.
Yep.
Yeah.
You know, and then you've got this one.
And when I was there in baking club, it was amazing, because, you know, that's my jam, so, good time.
Does that survey also include an opportunity for students to recommend?
Yes, it does.
Okay, and what have some of those been?
I haven't seen it yet for this year.
Oh.
Yeah, it's in progress right now, and I'm not even sure. I can't recall if it was last year or for this year, which, which year it's on the document, we usually do it every other year.
Okay.
I don't, I have to go back and look and see, I don't have any evidence tonight to see what it is. So usually you get, you get the report in March. I get it February, go through it, put it together, and the report is in March.
Uh, I also want to say piggyback off, you know, I do, I think like us doing, just talk to other people at other schools, like having the book fair that we do, and you know, the month, uh, the number of tests in the year that we have it. I always feel like, you know, it seems to, we always go above and beyond and see the number at every time. But which is great, because like every time those kids come inside on to hear the report, uh, they always seem excited and love it. And everything in the library was cool this year. I don't know if we'll just keep doing it like that, but I think it was something that I think I felt it a little more quaint and a little more, I don't know, like you're picking up books, that's like, you know, full slack that we do in it, so. Uh, Amanda was such a nice job with setting everything up and doing everything, so.
Uh, well, regarding my report, a few things to talk about and highlight. So every year, we look at what CBI index was for December of the prior years, two point nine last year, uh, three point four the year before, and that number is something that we use for the next fiscal year when we're talking about the levy. So last year, the CPI was three point four. We did the levy discussion, and I can remember we used three point four because that's the statutory limit, last year two point nine. Beginning to go down, uh, we had those two years where we had a couple of massive pieces of inflation. You see, I can give you a chart of what CPI has been by, looked like the last two years, uh, up and down, three point four to two point nine. Again, we're about the same, two point nine is about the average of where it's been the last thirty years historically, on average, two seventy, two nine. So it's kind of a normal-ish year. Or at that time of the year, where we're looking at food and service bids. So you'll see that can be on your agenda here in a few months. We spent the first part of the year creating that document. The state, it's unlike any other document that we do for bidding, when we did construction projects, the architects and the, and the ICI, the other bid docs, it's a few pages long, but it's not a hundred and fifteen pages long like the food service bid is. Uh, it's a very, uh, prescriptive process we have to go through. We have to send it to ISB, they get thirty days to review it, make recommendations and changes, send it back to us, but we have to go out and bid. And even better, when we do the bidding, they have to move before the board does.
Why don't they just do it like, you know how school districts out, or states have state adoption lists? Where they just adopt ten vendors or whatever vendors, like there are adoption lists for science and math curriculum sets, some states do it that way. It'd be nice if they took all this bidding process off of all the schools and say, here are these ten vetted people.
It, it has to do, from my understanding, it has to do because they use federal monies, part of the bootleg reimbursements, like the national school lunch program, we belong to that, which is state lunch program. And because they use federal monies, there's different levels of guidelines that we have to go through, that they have to, they have to jump through and justify money on the flow through. That's all I'm gonna tell you. I mean, if you don't want to take the state money, you're going to go through the process.
No, we want the state.
I know you, I know, you do, you want that money, uh, that product as well.
I do. Well, that was it, that was kind of my next question, I know we want the state money. So how do you get, and I don't know if you have the answer, but, uh, in the sense of like, the best quality?
Uh, well, so within specs that we wrote for this particular bid, we put in there the minimum of fifty percent of the main entrees had to be from scratch cooking. So fifty percent on a monthly basis, so there's twenty school days in a month, then ten out of twenty of the main entree, everything involved had to be from scratch, okay, and be defined what scratch cooking was. So a non-scratch cookie is easy to decipher. Comes in in the freezer, they pop it out, throw the box away, heat in the oven, serve it, not from scratch, okay? Chicken. I thought we hit that consultant respect a few years ago. Did, and when the pandemic went through there, we weren't able to get and cure all the food products that wanted to have from scratch cooking. Now we move back to that. And so we put it back, just take the same spec, took that same spec, put it back in, and actually left it five percent.
And we have the facilities, when you do scratch cooking in that kitchen, you play the fifty percent scratch cooking, because I know we have a smaller.
We have a smaller kitchen, uh, we don't have a ton of storage area, but what we do have should be adequate. They're getting the fresh produce on a regular basis, yeah, we've got enough space to do it. We have a giant freezer, uh, for the junior high, we have a freezer in the kitchen there. Could be benefit from a larger workspace, hundred percent. But if we also have more, we have more students eating the food, the food has a different, different quality level. Uh, and if more students ate, we'd eat more people, we'd need more space. We're not at that point yet, so. All you can say is for this year, we are replacing a stove that's on its last leg. Other than that, there's gonna be no changes in the setup for the future. So I, I gave you some details there, all of that's filled out in the, uh, in the documents. Goes out to the community, to the bidders in early February, there's a pre-bid meeting, and we should get the bids back in March, April, for hopefully a May board approval for the next cycle. Our current vendor, Organic Life, I do expect would be one of the bidders. But they will be held at the same spec that we've put in this particular document, fifty percent year one. If they want to re-up for year two, it's gotta be fifty-five percent, following year sixty percent of the main entrees.
Let me do three years, try to tell you.
You do a one-year contract, it's a one-year contract that you can renew five times.
Okay, okay. How, when have we liked Organic Life so far?
How have we liked them? Um, mixed, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna, it's mixed results. It started out, I think there was a certain level of expectation, and there were some, some real good positives the first year, and it's stabilized. And then not gotten to the point where it didn't do. So, do we have the number of students eating on a regular basis, the school lunch? Do, kids eat most of the time coming from their home lunch, which is fine. I mean, they've been lunch from home, and it's consumed within eight minutes, and then we have crowds, so. Chair.
Is that why you want to buy lunches, that they stay in line?
Probably, yeah, that's probably what I'm sure. And I think the portion sizes, especially in the junior high, you're limited by the, the portion sizes that come from the federal government.
Yeah, that's what I kind of think.
That's part of the, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, we will see how that goes. I also gave you some preview of summer building and site improvements that we're looking at for this next year. While we don't have a massive building project, uh, we do have some things we're gonna have to update, as we have every year. We have some exterior doors that need new key system, we have some restroom partitions that we're gonna replace due to damage. Carpet in the junior high classrooms, that'd be the last of that, sort of the refresh in the junior high, be those ten classrooms. We have some security cameras, we've noticed that we have some dead spots in the building. Oh, probably got a camera there, comes out the difference, we need to update that a little bit. We have talked to White Company about rehabbing the elementary gym. With our numbers in elementary, we had about five hundred and sixty kids in the elementary, uh, with trying to do five a week PE. That space needs a facelift, uh, the floor is starting to come up in a few spots in there, and it's a, it's a rolled rubberized floor. Pretty, pretty ancient, so we're looking at a refresh on that facility, trying to get it back at a spec. We will see, we are still planning to do the North Yorking Lot renovation. If you recall, that was the thing we tried to let the bid for in November of twenty-three. Didn't get IDOT authorization, still don't have IDOT authorization. It comes down to the right-of-way that they're requesting, a loss of parking spots, and the, and the loss of the middle access road, the last access point. Right through the right-of-way. We have, so the, the culverts on one seventy-six are broken, and so the water's sort of running toward the, it just backs the North Yorking Lot.
Then it freezes.
And it freezes, then breaks the parking lot, which is just, they're starting to do that right now, again. So in order to fix the culverts, we have to get IDOT approval. Now, since we're gonna fix the culverts, might as well fix the parking lot and fix the way it drains. If you'll think about it, right now, you walk out of the sidewalk, and you're at the same level of the parking lot. It should be, the sidewalk should be six or hundreds above the parking lot, and it's not. You can't just route out those culverts. No, not because it has to, it's an IDOT right-of-way, either authorization or do anything there.
Yeah, we can just unclog it. All the one that go over both of them, across the street or under the?
Under, under our accessways. All three under the, are crushed. They won't let us, they won't let us touch it without their authorization.
I know, but getting that is what's causing all the, all the changes that.
Yeah, so initially, even if we don't renovate the parking lot, in order to fix the culverts, they want us to eliminate the middle access, and that's your, the right-of-way. They want to draw up a plat, so that shows that they have the sixty-foot access, because eventually they're gonna make it a multi-lane road, eventually.
I don't know, I'm, I'm, I have never, I've been hearing that for a long time, a long time.
Fourteen years.
Yeah, it's been a long time, so.
I, it's just, and now it's like, now that people apply for permanent draws, that.
It's kind of attention, correct, yes. So, that's where they, so, you know, you don't have the permit yet, so we are not going to bid. Not touch it until you have the permit. We have the money, uh, to do that, we have the money for two years in our account going entries, so. When it's, if the government comes to fruition, we'll see.
Who, who, how does the contact with IDOT and the district happen?
The contact goes through is White Company, as applied to the permit, they're the, they're one of the contacts.
You know, they do it directly or do they, by expedite or?
Yes, it's a direct connection with a specific person at IDOT.
It's the last question, is the person at White a civil engineer or a, a subject?
Civil engineer, yes.
So they're doing their own, they're doing their own, correct, okay.
Our next step, if we don't have it by the February morning, our next step would be to contact our representative, see if they can put some pressure on IDOT, have them move off their right-of-ways with this expedite permit. Otherwise, it'll go away for, for another year, because we're getting to the point where if we don't go to bid, we won't be able to get it at some time and get it worked out, so.
Um, the summer building and site improvements, are those all budgeted for?
Those are going to be budgeted in next year's budget. And that's, not saying we're gonna do all those, but those are things that we're looking at currently, that we, we have identified that we need to do. Number one, the thirty student desks, since we have thirty more kids going to the junior high next year than we have this year, that's gonna be a must-do. The keying, uh, the carpet, the classrooms, those I'd love to do those, if we can budget and we can get that done at time, we'd love to, if not, no.
Is the scoreboard broken or damaged enough?
Uh, yes and no. Yes, it has its moments where it's in and out, the wire in, because it's a wired system, over time the wires break, and you plug them in and then unplug them, they get frayed, and you can't fix those because they're embedded with the walls. Junior high handle entry.
What are you gonna replace it for?
Another rubberized surface on this, yeah. Can't put a wood floor in the elementary gym without scraping out probably two inches of the concrete, because the wood floor sits on top of it and has, it's got a little give to it. So if you put concrete, like a wooden floor, rock top of the concrete, you'd have a nice, large step-up threshold for the hallway. Can't do that. So, it's gotta be about ADA issues, we have to wrap it up for the same kind of surface, like that. I suggested carpet, that, that was rejected by most of the people on the room, so to go back to a rubberized surface. Yeah, for the gym, that was carpet.
He was joking.
I'm not joking, I had it in my, my elementary school, it was great.
Was that great for the basketball players?
Awful for basketball, and volleyball, diving is not fun, no. Construction finance, we should have the last, the final payout for the last summer's project. Uh, it's, we did most of the, uh, retainage was done this month, we should have a few last, next month, that'd be the last one. And yes, under budget. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, probably wasn't seven hundred thousand under budget, that ballpark. Yeah. That's all I had for my report. I mean, it's in the, that personnel board is publicly listed, uh, you are gonna be looking for a junior high principal for next year. In that position, they're posted now.
I see, for teachers who are retiring.
We do have some retirees this year, yes.
So I hope we celebrate all of them at the end of the year.
We will invite them.
The retirees and.
Absolutely, all we can do is invite them.
Ma'am, a motion to approve the consent nature of village includes regular and executive session events from December seventeen, twenty twenty-four, bills payable, treasuries support, thoroughly financial, investment reports designation of executing executive session events, and destruction of the victims' recordings.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. See, non-vocal vote. Gwen Violet?
Yes.
Stephanie House?
Yes.
Jennifer Regola?
Yes.
Steve Sebastian? Josie Shattuck?
Yes.
Chris Shalishaw?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, ma'am, a motion approved resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh-one to appoint the superintendent to prepare the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six tentative budget.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. This is a regular thing.
Right, I already, yeah.
Good January.
Role call vote, please. Stephanie House?
Yes.
Jennifer Regola?
Yes.
Steve Sebastian?
Yes.
Josie Shattuck?
Yes.
Gwen Violet?
Yes.
Chris Shalishaw?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ma'am, a motion approved resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh-two to permanently transfer thirty, thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents from educational fund ten to debt service fund thirty.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So, our next bond payment is due on February the first, and the money we have budgeted to pay the bond note this year comes partially from education and partially from the loan, which would be motion nine point four. So we have the money budgeted, this pays the February payment, so we do it twice a year, once in February and once in August.
This is a bond for our construction.
Uh, yeah, this is both bonds combined, yeah, the twenty-one and twenty-three bonds combined.
Okay, so role call vote, please. Stephanie House?
Yes.
Jennifer Regola?
Yes.
Steve Sebastian?
Yes.
Josie Shattuck?
Yes.
Gwen Violet?
Yes.
Chris Shalishaw?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ma'am, a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh-three to permanently transfer nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and two cents from operation maintenance fund twenty to debt service fund thirty.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Any questions? Role call vote, please. Jennifer Regola?
Yes.
Steve Sebastian?
Yes.
Josie Shattuck?
Yes.
Gwen Violet?
Yes.
Stephanie House?
Yes.
Chris Shalishaw?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ma'am, a motion approved resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh-four to support Vision twenty thirty and the three areas of prioritization identified as future-focused learning, shared accountability, and predictable funding.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. So when did I ask beginning? Do, I mean, does, uh, did everybody know what the twenty thirty thing is?
We talked about it.
You did, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, so, so for the audience, the twenty thirty Illinois Vision, every, last, not the last, I guess the last time, twenty and twenty, we did it, we did Vision twenty twenty, and now twenty thirty. Uh, it's the nine statewide education associations, from the superintendent association, school board association, principal association, CSBO association, there's nine of them across the state, and every ten years now, they've started to gather their, uh, brain trust and talk about how they want to try to influence legislators and how, and how they work and do things in Springfield, because, you know, over the years, there have been countless numbers of pieces of legislation that have been passed in Springfield that have massive impacts on education and public schools, but we had no input. Uh, most of the unfunded mandates, there's a lengthy list of unfunded mandates. And while we do have a voice in Springfield, we have lobbyists, uh, this, these organizations that have kind of put these platforms together to help drive education and drive legislation. The biggest one that came out of the twenty twenty was funding mechanism. Evidence-based funding came into being then after, after the twenty twenty vision. And it's the most predictable funding formula that the state has had in decades. I know when I first started, thirty-three, forty years ago, we went through a period of time where the state, the, the constitution says they're to primarily fund education. Primarily means fifty-one percent, one over half, be primary, they're not even close to that. I mean, they were back in the eighties, it was actually over fifty-one percent. And it's been, it's been dropping and dropping, and I want to say it was down to twenty-eight percent at one time. It's been on a resurgence. Part of the EBF funding, what, that legislation that went, was every year they tried to add three hundred and fifty million new dollars to education. And also goes need of needs statewide based on how your local taxpayers fund districts. So there are four levels, one, two, three, and four, very gross district is a level four. So that means that our, we have a high tax rate, we have a high property extension, and we, ours is high. We put out a lot of tax money, and so our state revenue is low. Back in the day, when I first started, it was based on, you know, how many kids were in your building, you know, so attendance mattered, okay? Well, it takes in a lot more than just attendance now, it takes in, you know, how many IEPs you have, it takes how, I mean, English language learners you have. Before, it was just where, where the child would see, and here's your number per, per child. It's a lot different look at that now, education, how it's funded. The districts downstate, and many of them were way underfunded, now are getting more money. And so as long as the state was, you know, in a good budget position, they were adding more money to that every year. And so we were seeing stable funding for schools based on where they were on the, on the spectrum of, of their taxes, so. Vision twenty thirty has three main areas, uh, the future-focused learning, looking at college and career exploration, and student safety, educator pipeline, curriculum innovation, instructional flexibility. The shared accountability pillar talks about timely and useful assessments, accountability system, be more flexible and holistic, and some reform, uh, reform mandates. And obviously predictable funding, protecting EBF, the pitching reform, statewide funding for capital needs, and some, uh, financial flexibility. So all of those, those are the three pins, and so what they're gonna do is then they'll try to focus and help write legislation for people in Springfield that's more favorable to education, and they are more favorable to all the districts, not just, uh, the pet projects, the legislators sometimes get, you know, that someone's got a here, and someone's, they wanna put money into some area, they can get that done. This is, uh, more of a statewide, more universal, global approach. So, ten years ago, uh, you were in the same boat before, obviously, that you were asked to just support Vision twenty twenty, very well did. Ninety-plus percent of the districts around the state did support that, and it did lead to some positive change. Vision twenty thirty, uh, we, we had input on that from all areas, there were more vendors on the committee, there were superintendents on the committee. We were asking feedback, uh, during the process of the last year, and it was rolled out then in the school board conference in November. We, we shared, like, the last time, we shared a book review that has all the, the full depth and everything in it. I think it's an outstanding opportunity for boards to voice their opinions about what they support, what they don't support. Things that are in it are very global, uh, they are, for the most part, they are absolutely, you know, non-political. And I understand point is, it doesn't matter if you are leaning toward Republican, Democrat, everyone leans toward quality funding for schools, quality education for college and career choices, that's, that's universal and global, so that's the stance that it takes. I would encourage you to support.
Anybody have any questions?
How often does the state reevaluate that metric that is used to determine compensation for schools? Like how many IEPs do you have, you know, what is your attendance rates?
So, so we send reports to the state every year, and there's a new, they take all of our numbers and there's a calculation every year. If you recall, back in the fall, we talked about applying for the property tax grant, okay? And in that grant, it, I can, I can see it on my end, now there's a giant spreadsheet that has all the calculations, and so it's done every year. The formula for EBF is static, but then your numbers change on every year, just recent report to the state every month. And then every year, we get a final report to them.
Um, but so like, say ten years ago, maybe they just looked at attendance rate, and over time that has evolved, and they look at more criteria now? How often do they come together and analyze that list of criteria that it is?
In Springfield, never.
Oh, okay.
Unless they, unless they're gonna change the law.
Okay.
And right now, we think it's best that they not change the law, the law, but I also know that in ten years, it's been a lot of trouble in Springfield. Less than half the people that were, that were there to pass the EBF funding formula are now getting re-put still. So, we can have conversation, our, our, our lobbyists can have conversation with legislators and talk about EBF. It's fifty-fifty that they don't talk about, because they weren't there when it was passed. So, re-educate them as well.
Sure, I was just curious, is it a five years, or is it ten years, they've been going with that, but it sounds like that's not something?
Generally, when, when the state passes a law, until someone questions that law, or someone challenges it, they don't go back and revisit it and bother families, they just roll it out, here it is.
Thank you.
Role call vote. Gwen Violet?
Yes.
Stephanie House?
Yes.
Jennifer Regola?
Yes.
Steve Sebastian? Josie Shattuck?
Yes.
Chris Shalishaw?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ma'am, a motion to approve the student transportation buses from twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
All right, so here we are with our buses again. Uh, last year, we had a conversation about the mini buses, this will be the large buses. So currently, we had ten, we leased ten large buses for Midwest Transit in Kenton Key. We talked about our current needs, our future needs, and right now, we're asking to add a bus to that, for our fleet to go to eleven buses. So right now, we have nine routes and one spare, next year, we would have ten routes and one spare bus. And we've looked at a couple of different options, from buying buses outright to leasing buses, so. Buying buses is really not our, our pocketbook right now, and now we're asked to buy those, but if we did, you have to buy them like one at a time every few years, unless you have your own fleet. Downside of that, buying buses is we don't have an onsite mechanic, uh, that would be a separate contract, and we have no place to put the buses to have, uh, work on them, because everything's outside. Right now, in our current lease, uh, Midwest Transit sends a mechanic, and we have an issue with a bus, they send a mechanic onsite, brings all the tools, warehouse anything. One of the things we do locally would be tires, so we go, uh, like to Cassidy and Crystal Lake, new tires, new tires from there. We have three choices on the buses, so I'll start with option C. Option C would be our current bus fleet, okay, we currently have ten buses. We can re-lease our current buses for two more years at a cost of two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars per year for ten buses. We need eleven, so we'd have to add a bus to that list, which, I don't know where we, what that list would look like yet, but that's one option. Option B would be to trade our current bus fleet in for eleven more used buses that were new in twenty-two. You see, the cheapest rate there would be a three-year rate, that'd be two hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight forty-one a year for seventy-seven buses, or seventy-seven master buses. Option A would be going to bring in new buses for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five year. It's an upgraded model, it's only got a seventy-two capacity, instead of seventy-seven, that plays a. That plays a small role, the decision for eleven buses instead of ten. The price there, two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars a year for eleven buses.
Well, certainly, what's under warranties still?
Uh, they, right now, we have, nothing's under warranty now. We do have a, a warranty agreement, we buy a warranty agreement that's part of the lease.
I thought we always got our houses two years old, because they were, we were, we were using them for the last two years of the factory warranty.
Correct, and then that ended in twenty-two, that process. So the neighboring district was leasing the buses, and the fir, the four-year factory warranty, they took the first year, used it year three, four, okay? During the pandemic, that's one of the things that went away, was that option for us. So we currently don't have any factory warranty.
Unless we want to do.
Unless you go to the current.
So the twenty, option B, there's no warranty.
On option B, you might get one year of it, you know, if it was a four-year, you might get one. But the twenty-five year warranty, the factory warranty. And we look at the cost factor, I mean, going to used buses are twenty thousand dollars more per year than new buses. And I certainly don't wanna recommend leasing the current buses that we have that are already five years old for thirty thousand dollars less. So, my recommendation is to go to the next-gen seventy-two-capacity twenty-five model. Five, in the five years, the, the cheapest term, it does, definitely gives you the four years of factory warranty. And we are buying the warranty on maintenance for all the buses. Sorry, it's in five years, five years, yeah.
Fifty, that's fifty-five plus seats. Yeah, right, is that, how does that play with the routes?
We are already planning to add a route, change the route for next year and add a route, because we have some buses out or perhaps that need to improve things, right? We have some buses that are not, some buses not. And it varies year to year. Sometimes kids wanna ride the bus, sometimes they don't. Uh, we try to make a seat for everybody on the bus. It's not always feasible. But if you look at, you know, we have five hundred, five hundred K through four, that route. That would definitely fifty-fifty gets per bus, ten buses, that fit. But in order to do that, don't we have to change the routes? So, we are fully expected to change every route that we had for next year. It's our best.
We're gonna release for five years, we'd have the same fleet next five years.
Yes, we've had this currently for five, for five years. If you recall, uh, we rehashed it two years ago, we took a sixty-nine and a half percent increase on the buses that we already had in the parking lot. That was hard as hell, knowing that they were already on the parking lot. New buses, twenty-three point eight percent increase year over year, uh, from the current year to now, and the new ones, uh, two seventy-one would be the annual lease for the eleven buses. And it's a possibility. If, if our population continues to grow, we had, had a twelve bus, that'd be an additional cost. That should be maybe down the road two years. At this point in time, I'm comfortable saying that, uh, eleven buses will vary.
Anybody else have any questions?
So this is for next year? Correct, we deliver it in July, or actually, no, they're coming to us in May. They said they had it stocked ready for us.
We have the drivers.
We are currently fully stocked on drivers, when they're healthy. Okay, yes. Yes, we'll be adding a bus, a bus driver from the, to add to the route, yes. And who's, just saying, I mean, we have drivers that retire every year as well. It's generally a, it's generally what happens. So if you're interested in dropping the bus? No? Put that out there. I doubt either.
Okay, vocal vote, please. Stephanie House?
Uh, yes.
Jennifer Regola?
Yes.
Steve Sebastian?
Yes.
Josie Shattuck?
Yes.
Gwen Violet?
Yes.
Michelle Shaw?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ma'am, we have a motion to table a separation agreement of the, the straight art.
So moved.
Second. Vocal vote. Stephanie House?
Yes.
Jennifer Regola?
Yes.
Steve Sebastian?
Yes.
Josie Shattuck?
Yes.
Gwen Violet?
Yes.
Michelle Shaw?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Yeah, a motion to adjourn at seven thirty-five P M.
Hello. Second.
On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not anybody, that is, motion carries. See you next month.
Thank you.